I'm looking at the wrong date here. February 24th, 2022, times 11:01 a.m. This is a special meeting agenda. It's our human resources to consider personnel changes. Do we have any changes to the agenda? I hear of none. Also calling the meeting to order, attending commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. And let's see, so the first item on our agenda is higher duty pay request for heavy equipment mechanic for parks and waterways. Nick?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record. Yeah, before you is a request for temporary pay adjustment. One of our heavy equipment mechanics is out on a work-related injury. And one of our maintenance worker twos has been filling that position since February 9th. So I'm requesting retroactive pay for that employee. From February 9th moving forward, the employee will be out an undetermined amount of time. For the most part, commissioners, this is a budget neutral action in that the employee is out again on work-related, so we're not paying his salary. We do have some intermittent light duty that we're able to provide and will continue to, but again, the budget impact is fairly negligible on this action.
Okay. Any questions for Nick?
Since it's an unspecified amount of time, Nick, are we going to do this for six months? Are we going to do it indeterminate? I mean, I kind of feel better having a cap on it.
Any idea, Nick?
Sure. It, yeah, difficult to know, commissioners. And I want to be careful what I say here, on open mic, in regard to what's going on with the employee, but we will have better information in the weeks to come as testing and some things come back that may end up being a surgical procedure. So I would at least request that we push this out to, say, May 1st. I hope it's not that long, but it certainly could be, and I'm happy to come back to the commissioners at that time.
Okay.
That's two months. Okay. All right, I'm good with that. Motion?
I move that we approve the higher duty pay retroactive to February 9th and then to be reevaluated at the 1st of May.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Second item, additional overtime funding request for the assessor's office. Bayla or is it Allison who's taking this?
I will address it, commissioners. So commissioners, the request, as you stated, is to request additional funding for our budget, for our overtime expenses. We're projecting out our need to be in the range of about $17,000 projected through the end of this fiscal year. We need that because we need to address a variety of issues. We have some pinch points in our land records division, in our residential appraisal division, in our group of, in our section that actually provides the data processes back and forth due to the loss of some institutional knowledge and new personnel and training. So we'd like to have that to meet the needs in order to meet the statutory calendar.
Okay.
And deadlines.
And then, do you have this in your budget due to salary savings?
This is a revenue neutral request. We do have some savings, yes. Thank you for that, Commissioner Duncan. We do have some surplus in our budget, so this should be a revenue neutral request that we can cover in our budget. We're simply asking to reallocate it from one budget line to another.
Okay.
So where's?
How long do you anticipate? This is what, until you can get up to staff, is that it?
This is projected overtime expenses through the end of the fiscal year.
End of the fiscal year, okay, you mentioned that earlier.
Did I misstate that? Through the end of the fiscal year.
October, November, December, January. He's got seven months.
Right, so Dina, at this point, it's just a shakeout thing, right? We're just, he's just letting us know. So, yeah, so essentially, when we get closer to the end of the year, if you end up being over, then, then we'll.
Figure it out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make it right. But to me, this is, I guess, Darren, do you want a formal motion on this? Because he's kind of telling us.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Bill, any questions?
No.
Okay.
I move that we approve the additional overtime funding request to be paid for out of salary savings.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion's carried. Item number three, salary increase for application systems manager, information technology, possible executive session, but I don't think we're going to need to go into the names. So go right ahead, James.
Morning, commissioners. James Martin for the record. We've had an open application system manager position for two months, and we finally identified a candidate with a lot of skills in software coding, database management, and he has over five years' experience. I think it'd be easy to justify bringing him in at 97% of market. The issue is that about a year and a half ago, when we hired our other application systems manager, I made a mistake in bringing him in at the bottom of the salary range, not realizing the experience he had previously, and that coupled with the year and a half of experience he's got here at Cootney County. He also, in my opinion, deserves to be brought up to the 97% of market. So that is my request, that we both bring in the new applicant at 97% of market at grade 10, and also the existing application systems manager. It's, we're stating also that this is the first application we've got for this position in two months. Well, technically, we've got two, but the other person, other applicant didn't have any skills.
Was not remotely, yeah, okay.
Any of the qualifications.
Okay, so how many other openings do you have?
Two.
You have two others, okay. Which you hope to fill, I presume, as soon as possible?
Yes, we've had one open at the sheriff's office for over a year now, just trying to get someone through the background check. And we also have a PC application specialist in our office.
Okay, so did you say of the two, you have one in background?
Yes.
Okay, so if that works out, you'll have one opening. If you also fill that opening, what happens to your budget with this, with this potential So if we bring the individual up so that you have parity and you fill the other two positions?
The position, I can't speak for after that. I assume it'll be, eventually, it'll be an increase to the overall budget. For this year, according to the budget impact document that the auditor's team's created, it'll be budget neutral for this year.
Okay.
But going forward, there will be an increase. I believe it's about, just salary alone is probably $7,000 per year.
Commissioners?
Go right ahead, Kim.
If the positions remain open through the budget process where they pull in the position number budgeting, they'll be pulled in at market. So no one, without an exception, policy would be hired at market or above. Just another piece of the puzzle.
Okay, so take me back just a little bit. Take me back to policy. How do we handle situations like this?
Okay, in terms of policy, the department heads and elected officials have the authority to hire up to 97% of market. So that's what James is doing, but what makes his situation complicated is that he has an existing application system manager that is qualified and should have been brought in at that same level and didn't. So in order not to lose him and that expertise in being a highly skilled position, I think, you know, it's appropriate to also make that adjustment for the 97% of market for that existing employee. And we have done that in the past with new hires that may exceed the salary of an existing employee.
So where does this, the existing employee, where does he stand currently? At what percent of market?
He's at a step two, which is.
Eighty-five.
I'm sorry?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
And he would be going to 97% of market.
So they'll be at the same level?
Yes.
As James said, the number of applications that we've received for this position is very small. It's a very hot market for tech jobs right now, and to have a qualified applicant and an existing qualified employee, we're grateful to see.
Any other questions?
No.
Bill?
No.
Motion?
I move that we approve the salary increase for the system, or the application system manager in IT.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried. Where's that coming? Okay, fourth item, temporary ECO, excuse me, position request, 911 Sheriff's Office, possible executive session, probably not going to be necessary, but Dan, are you going to speak to this? Sheriff?
Ryan Higgins.
Oh, I'm, who?
Lieutenant Higgins is open.
Oh, Lieutenant Higgins, go right ahead.
Yeah, so we, last summer, we lost Lindsay Robinson, who was an ECO for us. She took a contract job overseas with her husband, and she's back in the area temporarily and is looking to maybe come back on on a temporary basis. And considering the situation and the status of, or the lack of employees we have in the dispatch center, I think it's a good timing for her to come back, even if it's going to only be for about three months. So this is a request to bring her on board. April 4th would be your start date, and July 8th would be your end date. This would be a non-benefited position, and we'd ask that she'd come in at 2508, as she left. She has over eight years of experience, and she has a Level 2 certification.
Okay. Quick question, Lieutenant, how many openings do you have in this particular department?
We currently have eight, and we're going to lose two more in March.
You currently have, say, eight?
Yeah.
Eight.
Eight vacancies, and we're going to have two more vacancies in March when, when we have a retirement and transfer.
Okay, okay. Any questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the temporary ECO position as outlined for the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Lieutenant. Item number four, temporary ECO position.
That was it.
Oh, that's what we just did. I'm sorry, number five, overtime proposal for the sheriff's office, potential action item.
Good morning, commissioners. Robert Norris, thank you for taking the time to hear this. As you may or may not know, law enforcement is struggling to retain people. We've had three resignations the last couple of days, both of them citing, or all of them citing, to go to different industries. And if I can, I won't read the name, but one of the letters of resignation on my desk today is, "I really appreciate the opportunity to work at the sheriff's office. I have enjoyed working with some of the best and most professional people I've ever met. I have great experience from this job and will cherish them the rest of my life and continue and enjoy the lasting relationships I've made." Another one said that, "I will always be grateful for this opportunity or working for the sheriff's office." All of these three, and the other one did this similar, but all of these three are leading law enforcement, going into a different industry. And I understand that, and we're very grateful for what the board did in 2020 with the 2% COLA, when COLA was 5.9-ish. We're very grateful for the 2.1 that we got last year, when the CPI was in the 6. But when you go two or three years without significant comparable COLA to our competing agencies, it's getting more difficult to retain people. But you've heard all of these things from me before. So what I'd like to do is I'd like for you to consider bringing our overtime pay for our personnel competitive to the other agencies in our market, such as, when you work for an agency in the city of Coeur d'Alene, when you work overtime, you get your time and a half or double time, triple time, depending on, but we're not asking for that. We're asking for, if you're working an overtime assignment, and it's an ordered overtime assignment, we would like to pay our people at the rate of time and a half. Currently, if a deputy has to go to court and has a subpoena to go to court, and he went to his, he took a holiday day because he went to the doctor with his wife, then he doesn't get that time and a half, he only gets straight time. So we, we believe in the spirit of the pay study, to bring our wages competitive to other agencies in the area, we would like for you to please consider doing this for our personnel.
Okay. Thoughts?
Well, I guess I probably just have some questions for legal. I didn't get this document, maybe it was put in my folder later, so I haven't had time. Oh, I see that it just states our policy, receive overtime after 86 hours worked in a 14-day period. Okay. I don't know, what are your thoughts?
You know, once again, I, I want to wait for the wage study. You know, we do have some money allocated. I don't know that it's necessarily for this application. I understand the sheriff's issue, and I also understand policy, but since we have a wage study that is due to complete in, what is it now, about a week?
Yes, we just got word yesterday that finally, all the data from our market agencies has been received. I'll have an update Thursday, a call, another call with them, so hopefully, all the numbers will be in, calculated and averaged, and the reports will be ready, but we'll have a call with them on Thursday. So very shortly. It's, yeah, Thursday the 2nd.
Okay, so that's, that's next week?
Fourth, sorry, yes.
Okay, so when they do what they do with their study, is it going to take up a question such as the one that the sheriff has posed here with regard to overtime?
No.
Okay, so they're basically going to look at straight wages?
They're looking at wages, yes.
Okay.
Well, I just have questions for Darren, but.
Go right ahead.
Darren, the other, I mean, I see that our policy fits the law, but they're saying that there are other surrounding agencies have different overtime policies. So have you looked into that at all? Is there any guidance that you can give?
So it would be, this is an additional benefit above and beyond what the law requires?
Right.
So the board would have discretion. Our typical practices on compensation benefits is, if the board wants to go in that direction, that we, we look at the county as a whole, and then we look at elected officials, because sometimes there are, I can think of one where there's a unique situation to the sheriff's office, where that additional benefit was provided by the state, and it just made a whole lot of sense for the sheriff's office and the county to provide that benefit for the sheriff's office. So we would evaluate that and the impact on the rest of the county. And then the, the board, of course, it's compensation, you would have to have a budgetary impact.
Right.
So that would need to be evaluated. And then we typically try to utilize model policies. ICREP has some model policies, and so I have a good understanding, I've talked to the sheriff about this, of what they want to do. But I, I assumed what Commissioner Filios had mentioned, that you were going to start with the wage study and go from there.
Yeah, because this is a $235,000 cost, it looks like.
I don't see how, and I talked to Dina about that, but I don't see how you can predict that. And maybe she can, you know, let us know how she arrives at that, but I mean, you just don't know what overtime you're going to have. Now, you can go by historical references, but, and maybe that's what Dina did, but there's just really no way to say for sure what kind of overtime you're going to have in any given period.
We are stressing our personnel. They are ordered overtime to work these shifts. And then if they take a fringe benefit day off, and then we need that employee to mandated work the next day or in that period of time, it's becoming more difficult to get them to come in, short of saying, "I am ordering you to be over at briefing at 0600 hours, and if you do not show up, you will be insubordinate, and you'll be subject to insubordination." I mean, I, I'm puzzled with, with why we, we are having a conversation on trying to retain people in this very difficult market.
Darren, I have a question for you. We have a policy in effect. If we bend this policy, do we bend it for everyone?
So that's what we would evaluate, if this is something that the board is interested in going forward on, that's what Sylvia and I have done in the past, is we would evaluate that. And I know that it's been a while, but we circulated it to the other electeds for some input. Not doing that is problematic.
Not doing that?
Not circulating it has shown to be, yeah, some hurt feelings, upset. They wanted a voice.
But treating law enforcement different than different bureaus or divisions or departments is not something new. I'm perplexed why a city police officer can retain 400 hours of comp time, and why a city officer can get time and a half for these events regardless of what type of fringe benefit time that they take. If we're in the interest and the spirit of the wage study to be competitive, I'm not so sure why there's so much reluctance to not extend this to.
Okay, let me make a couple of points. I think the first point is that the three situations that you cited earlier today, the three resignations, are people leaving for other professions or other industries, and that's increasing not just with regard to your department, but on a nationwide level. Sheriff, very candidly, I can't do anything about that. I can't fix that problem. If we're losing to other jurisdictions, same job, other jurisdictions, now we got a problem. Yes, you do have an issue, okay? And secondly, I think we've done, we've done as much as we can, given the limited taxing authority that we have. And so what I'm willing to do is consider this, but I want to look at the wage study first. And I do have an issue, and I think it goes back to what Darren just said, if I do this for you, and I understand there are exceptions that sometimes have to be made for law enforcement.
Why do we, we have a different retirement plan than a general plan member? Why is that?
You want me to answer that?
Sure.
I can't answer that. I haven't thought about it. Maybe Darren can answer that, I don't know. And I don't accept the argument that because you necessarily have a different retirement plan, that you should have necessarily a different comp plan. You do. You've been on a matrix.
But we're treated differently than general plan members.
Yeah, well, you know what? That's true. For years, you've had a matrix, appropriately so, the general pay plan hasn't. Now they do. So if you want to talk about different treatment or differential treatment, that's been the case. I've been at the forefront of trying to get you guys competitive. I don't know that we can always be entirely competitive with Coeur d'Alene, and they're unionized as well.
I, I have already told our people on the organization, we will never be the highest-paid agency.
That's true.
We're not even going to be the same. Just get me within 3%. That's all. I don't expect to be the top. Now, the jail is a different animal, we're more talking about patrol right now, the jail is a different animal. We might have to be above the wage study for the jail. That's something I have to do. And so, go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead, Dan.
Back to the fiscal impact, I don't, I realize we have to be fiscally responsible and work within the confines of our budget. I don't want to overlook that, and I do want to defer to Dina on that, you know? I know Leslie with respect to what you brought up. I don't see that, I don't see that as a big issue, given the circumstances, but Dina's much better with, with the numbers than we are, you know? And that's what she does. I just don't, I don't understand how it could be that much of an impact. So if that needs to be discussed, so we're, we're clear on it, then I think now is a good time to do it.
So I guess here's what I am thinking, and that is for Darren and Sylvia to take a holistic view, for you to get with Dina, and to figure out what the actual impact is, is going to be. I also don't mind instituting temporary accommodations, and I think that all this information can be put together by the time Sylvia's got that wage study information, and we can incorporate several changes at once. But I always like to take a holistic view, and if I don't know how it's going to affect other departments, doesn't mean I won't make that decision to affect different departments, but I need to know what exactly that looks like. So it would be helpful if you disagree with, you know, the cost, that we get some reasoning behind it. It's helpful to know how it will negatively impact other departments in the county, and may not, so.
While we're on the record now, could, could we ask Dina, I mean, to add, to just at least opine on how she came to that figure?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm reading her, and I don't have a problem with that, she can come up to the microphone, but I'm reading it, and it, it says it's based on your current burn rate. So, I mean, Dina, you can.
It's going to be significant. I mean, because we had to suspend the Marshall contract for $389,000 in revenue because of our count and because of our personnel. So I just, I'm flabbergasted at the, where the support is for law enforcement and the sheriff's office in this.
I think you've got, I think you've got plenty of support, I really do. I too want to see the wage study. I think that's critical, but I don't want to do something artificially less or more than what we need, because it's very easy to shoot in the dark here, and we do have historical numbers from Dina, right? Okay, that's a yes. And, and, and we need to treat these people, you know, whether it's a control room operator or a detention deputy or a patrol deputy, in such a way that they, that wages is washed out as far as why they would leave here.
You know, the, and I'm glad you came up, Dina, thanks. You know, I guess the, the part that I have trouble trying to understand about how you predict this is because you just can't tell who's going to take a holiday time when they have overtime at the same time. And I just, I believe that, it sounds high to me, but I defer to Dina.
Okay, so there's, there's two parts to this, as I understand it. So right now, our policy says for, for people who don't, aren't law enforcement, their overtime is based on 40 hours a week. For law enforcement, because of the nature of what they do, they're on a 24-hour schedule, their overtime is based on 80 hours in a two-week period.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. So because of that, they're not hitting those overtime marks until they've already clocked a bunch of hours, and as the sheriff said, when you have a holiday, that kind of, you know, that complicates things. So the estimate that I did was based on their burn rate, as you said, did not take into account the 40 versus 80. So if you do grant this and you make it 40 hours a week, I think that this will inflate our overtime budget.
Okay.
By how much, we'd have to, you know, crank through the numbers and do some scenarios to see.
Right.
But I think that's the crux. Am I hitting the crux of the overtime ask?
You know, it probably does bear looking at it more in terms of, of what you're saying, Dina, but the way it works now, I think we all understand it, but, and I gave the examples, in a, by, in a, in an 80-hour work period, if somebody takes 10 hours off during that 80 hours, and during that two weeks, they take 10 hours off and they have 10 hours of overtime that they accrue, they lose the overtime.
Right.
That's, you know, now, when you talk about it being predicated on 40 hours a week, I'm not sure if that conversation, how that works into the 80. into the 80-hour biweekly period, there's the top of the 86 hours that you mentioned, Chris. Um, so, I, it, it's so difficult to be able to predict who's going to have overtime, and who's going to take time off.
Sure.
It, it, you know, I don't think that this is an, an unreasonable request.
Well, all the problems are, all the problems are feeding, see, the vacancies are the reasons why we're working overtime.
Correct.
The reason we're not taking the time off, or taking the time off, is because of the fatigue and exhaustion, and because we need to take the time off because of our, that towards the end of the year, we have too much time on the books. So, so, it's like...
It's vicious, though.
Yeah, it, it's like, I'm, I'm confused, I'm, do you, do you not see this?
Oh, I see it, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily have an issue with the request, but the sheriff is looking out for appropriately 300, whatever your...
Less than that, just the sworn.
Two-seventies, whatever it is.
Sworn.
I have to think about, or we have to think about 800 employees, or 850, whatever we're at. And so, what I'm saying is if we're going to change it, we really should change it for everyone.
Well, then, hey, Darren, explain this to me. Why do some municipalities in Idaho treat their law enforcement offices different than others? Why is, why is there such a persistent push here that it has to be equal?
Um, be- because of the law. So, if there's disparate impact, the law treats the county as one entity, not separate elected officials. So, and it doesn't work very well with county government, but that's just the way the law treats it, federal law treats it, so...
Okay, so how does the city of Coeur d'Alene get away with this?
So...
How do, how are they able to pay their people at triple time on a holiday, or double time on a holiday, and have 400 hours of bank versus non-safety members?
So, Bob, I, I can't speak to other agencies, or cities, or municipalities, they have their own legal counsel, they have their own decision makers, but I can tell you what we do historically in Cootney County, is we try to treat people the same, and there are circumstances where it makes sense to not treat them the same, because they're different. So, what we try to do is Sylvia and I call balls and strikes, and then the board makes the decision. So, that's all we were going to do on this file, is look at it, call balls and strikes, and allow the board to make an informed decision. And what I was saying is historically, when we haven't brought stuff like this to the other elected officials, they've been ticked off, and I understand why that they were ticked off.
And then it'd be the same thing if another elected official came for something that could negatively affect your department, you would want to be, you'd want to be notified. So, I haven't heard any one of us say we're against this proposal. I have heard, um, at least for me, I need more information, um, and it sounds like Chris and Bill want the information of the wage study, so, um, you know, going out, getting the answers to the questions, bringing it back before us, I don't see an issue with that. So, there's a lot of decisions that, especially financial, that affect the entire county, that just cannot be made on one presentation. Uh, for me, I need to look holistically at everything, and it doesn't mean that I'm not going to support it, it means I need to know what the effects are.
Sylvia, did you want to jump in here, by any means?
At this point, well, whatever direction the board that asks that Darren and I take, we'll do that research, get you that information. Um, just looking at, I've had conversations with Bonner County and Post Falls, and they treat all their employees the same. Um, the only exception at Post Falls is they give their, um, public safety staff a uniform allowance or a cleaning allowance.
Well, that's different, yeah.
But benefit-wise, it's the same.
Okay. Bill?
I, I'm going to, this is a very complicated issue. I think everybody's in support of law enforcement. We know we need it, we see them struggling, and I'm going to take a much deeper dive into the sheriff's office, if that's okay, and see what I can, uh, bring up and, and bring forward to the community and to the, the Board of Commissioners. Uh, I have no, not a political bone in my body at this point. This is all about, uh, how do we make it work better within the money that we have?
The fundamental thing...
Your microphone, Dan.
Come on, man, I'm hard of hearing already.
The fun, the fundamental thing here is competitiveness, and our chief competitor is Coeur d'Alene City. I think they just promoted three sergeants la, a, a month or a couple of months ago, and every one of them came to Coeur d'Alene City from us. We train them well, we equip them well, and, and...
We season, season them well.
We need to be in the ballpark, and to what the sheriff said, yeah, we, we know we're not going to, uh, you know, be right at their level, but to be close enough to where it's not enticing for them to leave, that's what we want to do, and that's part, or probably the bigger part of this proposal, is to remain competitive and try to treat our people as, as the best we can.
Sure, and, and I appreciate when it's brought as a whole package at budget season, and not kind of these one-offs that are a little bit more difficult to tackle.
Well, difficult times require difficult actions.
We're in a fluid situation, Sheriff. It's very difficult to predict, uh...
There's never a good time.
Yeah.
Okay, so Sylvia...
Jennifer's.
Is there a way, um, that it could be a temporary policy for this fiscal year, something if we have to do it holistically?
Turn the mic on.
Yeah.
Is there an approach that we can do if we have to do it holistically, a temporary policy for this, and we can address it during budget season, um, seeing that we'll, we'll have salary savings? I think you have, what, 14 positions open right now?
Well, more than that.
In jail, and in, is it tied in parole? So...
What you're saying is take a, take a temporary measure...
Temporary policy, if you look at the...
And then go ahead and address the policy more generally for fiscal year 23.
If we need to, if we can afford it next year, and then, um, if you guys want to continue on, fill the vacancies.
And I think that's possible, but I still, I think back to what Sylvia suggested earlier, between she and, and Darren to get together. Now, what is it you're envisioning you guys would do?
Review policies, um, from other entities, look at it as a whole, from a county-wide perspective, or public safety need.
Okay, Sylvia.
Right, Darren?
Right.
So, go ahead, Darren.
Uh, yeah, and Commissioner, it's a compensation issue, and the sheriff makes a good point, he's, he's bleeding right now, and he's looking for a way to stop the bleeding, and additional compensation is, is one way to stop the bleeding. So, this is, uh, an additional compensation policy that is unique to their situation, that they're losing a bunch of people. They're just, um, the county needs to look at the impact of that countywide. I'm not saying that what the sheriff is bringing forward's a bad idea.
And, and I never said it was, I just said that I have to have more information to make this decision.
So, if you, if you guys are going to look at it from the standpoint of competing counties, Bonner, Spokane, uh, whatever it is, and at the same time, converging with that is the wage study, we'll have something to go on.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Lieutenant?
I'm actually going to speak as myself, welcome. I'm here representing the Sheriff's Association of Hopeful Lodge.
You got to pitch.
And then put it away for me, put it away.
Yeah.
Perfect. I, I just wanted to make a couple of just quick points on the, on the FOP Lodge's stance on this. Um, I just had a question to Darren, if, and anybody in the room, how many elected officials have employees that are mandated to come in on their day off and work, ordered to come in on their day off and work?
Juvenile detention, adult, yeah, misdemeanor, solid waste.
There's a few. Law enforcement-oriented factions.
And even solid waste, sometimes.
Right, solid waste, yeah.
What we're asking basically for, uh, through the association to the sheriff, and it's obviously supported by the sheriff, is when a officer or a deputy sheriff goes to mandated court on their day off, which we do commonly, they spend four hours, the previous week they had a sick day because their kid was sick, they now lose their overtime, they just do, right? Secondly, if they're ordered to come in on their day off to spend another day at work in B week of the pay period, but they happen to have a sick day the previous week, they lose their overtime. But it's, and it's, it's only affecting really the law enforcement-oriented sections of the county, and that's why historically, not all agencies and not all jurisdictions, but historically across the nation, law enforcement is treated a little bit differently in this sense, and that's what we're asking for. We're not asking to be exactly what all these other agencies make, but this is one of those small things that we could look at to give our folks one extra thing, that they are willing to stay a little bit longer when they, when they get this as an added benefit. One of the things that we're having issues with is calling people in to fill shifts on overtime for mandatory things that we have to do, we have to cover the shifts. Well, deputies are telling us, they look at their time sheet, and they know that in A week, they had a sick day because their kid was sick from school, so they had to stay home. So, they don't necessarily want to come in on their day off and work a 10 full-hour shift because they know they're going to lose their overtime, that it's going to be straight time, because it's not a benefit to them necessarily. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And so, from that mindset, that's, from the FOP Lodge's sense, that's kind of why we're asking for you to look at this as a, as a benefit. Again, there will be a financial impact, it's probably not going to be a super huge great impact, I know that has to be looked at, but again, as a benefit for us to retain people, it's another, you know, arrow in a quiver to give folks. We had a, a shooting recently, right? Several of them, obviously. We had a sergeant who had 13 hours of overtime in A week, worked an extra shift, covered, had 13 hours of overtime. They were involved in the shooting, so they had to go on admin leave that next week. They lost their overtime, no, this was not on them, they didn't do anything wrong, but they had to be put on administrative leave for the investigation. They lost their overtime from their, from their first week. And again, this isn't very common in law enforcement, that they lose their overtime when, when an event like this happens. And so, just wanted to make those statements as the FOP Lodge, to make sure that you understood where we were, were coming from as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, you have a wage study completing next week? You're going to work with Darren? Sylvia, check out the neighboring communities? I don't think anybody here is saying we're not going to do this. I think what we're saying is, let's look at it more globally to see, and, and it may be that very few other organizations are affected. I don't know that. I suspect that the few that maybe law enforcement are affected, and then we can ma- make a determination as to whether or not we can do this. Again, we also have to consider, soon fiscal 23 is going to be upon us, so everything we do is increasing that base that we're going to be working off as far as salaries are concerned for next year. And obviously, we're not just looking at trying to fund a matrix and, and running the people through the matrix, but at the same time, uh, what do you call it? Because of inflation and, and the increasing CPI that we're basically looking at also a wa, uh, what's the term I'm looking for? Help me out. The COLA, yes, cost of living increase. So, all that has to factor in.
Well, and I think the COLA may already be factored into the wage study.
Yes.
So, we may not see it separated out at this point.
The numbers you're going to see from Ameribank will be fiscal year 22 numbers, and then we're going to have to factor, I've talked about aging the data...
Aging it, yes.
...to relate it to fiscal year 23.
Yep.
Okay, what I want to be sure of, though, is reaching out to the other electeds, because I don't want this to drag on any, any longer than it has to. Who's going to do that?
Well, once we come up with the game plan, I, we would present it to the board initially, and then, um...
Sorry, he's back on this overtime issue, not the wage study.
Right.
Yeah, the overtime issue.
Yes.
We would bring back the information to the board initially, and saying, okay, this is, these are our findings, and Darren, please, um, go ahead and pipe in, and then whatever direction you would give us from there, um, look at it. But we would be looking at it from that pla, you know, juvenile detention has mandatory posts. So, if it was only a public safety thing, temporary thing you did, we'd want to be able to factor that in as well.
Yeah.
So, the communication back to the EOs would come after we present something to you, um, or we can send it out in draft somehow.
Well, I, I don't know that...
The logistics of that, as we go.
Yeah, I, I just think letting them know now, to say, we're looking at this.
Yes.
That, I think that would be sufficient.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't want to wait till you guys bring something back, and then we talk to the EOs, just reach out to them now.
And so, who would you like to do that? Do you want us to do that?
Yes.
The board members, or...
No, can you do that?
Yeah.
Basically, you know, fundamentally, what you're looking for is how many people are potentially, how many organizations are subject to this? To the overtime situation.
Not just overtime, but the way overtime is...
Yeah.
...detailed at the sheriff's office, how many organizations have that kind of specificity and, and suffer that kind of loss?
Well, countywide, all employees are subject to what is considered actual hours worked, and if you take sick leave, vacation leave, holiday, um, or admin leave with pay, those are not, um, calculated into the overtime calculation.
Now, I'm, I'm not talking about how, how it's calculated, I'm talking about how it's assigned, and it's assigned, uh, not because we'd like to be open an extra hour for the public, it's assigned because we have, uh, situations that, that require additional staff time.
I think the concern is, I, I think it's the one that Darren raised earlier, okay? From a legal perspective, and for the, for the sake of consistency, which is essentially one and the same, who's subject to this? And it may be that it's going to be mostly the sheriff's organization, and maybe one or two others, I don't know. And then that way, we can look at it and say, okay, now we can potentially solve this problem and do it in a manner that doesn't expose the county legally. Makes sense?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes, if we do it quickly.
Are you okay? Oh, okay. All right.
She's nodding her head.
For the record, the direction of the board is to study this some more and bring back more information, and then you'll make a decision.
In a ti- in a timely...